Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 2nd, 2022 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present tonight, everybody back in town. Our first item of business is to approve the minutes of the October 19th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Everybody had a chance to review those?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to our public hearings and recommendations to City Council. We have three tonight. The first one is a zoning application for approximately 34.2 acres located west of Memorial Boulevard to be rezoned from RS 15 to PRD. This is North Ridge Park PRD. Gien Holmes is the applicant, and I apologize if I messed that up. Ms. Green, you can correct me on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones, and Planning Commission. We do have an application from Gien Holmes, which is a development company from Texas, and they have a contractual interest to purchase two parcels that are identified in blue on the map that's on the screen before you. The properties are currently zoned Commercial Highway, Commercial Fringe, and RS 15, and this application is only to consider the residentially zoned portion of the property. So the part of the property that's zoned CH and CF is not a part of this application, and they're requesting for it to remain as is. However, the 34.2 acres that you see in the blue is the subject of this application, and it's currently zoned RS 15. This property is located south of Regency Estates, east of Regency Park, and north of Palmer Heights. All of those properties are developed city single-family subdivisions zoned RS 15, and RS 15 is residential, single-family zoning, and it has a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. Just to the east of this property is the Family Worship Center. It's also the location of the neighborhood meeting for this property that the developer hosted. I did mention that there's two parcels. It looks like it's three, but one of them's just separated, so just to clarify that. The plan that's proposed is called North Ridge Park PRD, Planned Residential District, and as it's submitted, they're proposing for it to be a single-family detached subdivision on the 34.2 acres for a total of 96 dwelling units, and that density comes out to 2.8 dwelling units per acre, which is within our sewer allocation ordinance parameters. Change sheets here. The way that the plan has laid, has been laid out, the lots that you see in blue on the map before you are proposed to have side-entry garages, and the orange lots in the center have front-entry garages. It also has two minimum lot sizes, 12,000 square foot minimum and 10,000 square foot minimum. The 12,000 square foot minimum lots are mainly on the perimeter of the parcel, so directly adjacent to the existing Regency Estates, Regency Park, and Palmer Heights subdivision, because those developments have a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, and so this has the larger lots of 12,000 square feet on the perimeter, and some of the interior lots are 10,000 square feet. Planning staff asked the applicant, when they originally came in, they showed development with mostly front-entry garages, and we asked them to go back and look at the plan and see how they can have a predominantly side-entry garage community, since that would be more consistent with what we see in this area. And so they were able to change it, so that 11 of the lots do have the front entry that are more interior to the site, but 85 of them have the side-entry garages. This property will have access to a signalized intersection. There will be modifications that will be required to be done by the developer to add this as an additional leg to that signal. And of course, Memorial Boulevard is a major arterial, and it's a Tennessee highway. Additionally, this property has five streets that stub into the property, and that's where existing city public street dead ends into some undeveloped property, and it's not a cul-de-sac, it just dead ends into the property. So concurrent with the city's regulations, which require stub streets to extend into adjacent properties, we have asked them to connect those streets, and so you can see those five connections, one, two, three, four, five. And then, of course, this will be the signalized intersection. We've also got some additional requests for improvements, like a right turn lane in from Memorial Boulevard, and asked the applicants to perform a traffic study, as they have committed to in the neighborhood meeting. Each lot on, within this development, is designed to meet the minimum parking standards that the city of Murfreesboro has. I know that recently we've seen many requests to have an exception to reduce the number of driveway parking spaces. Our zoning ordinance requires single-family lots to have four driveway spaces in addition to a garage, and so they are providing that with this plan, and I wanted to point out there was no exception for that. Staff did also notice that there was some maps that indicated there might be something unusual with the property as far as hydrology, and so we did have the developer prepare an HD study to determine if there are any blue line streams on the property or any wetlands or something that should be an area of concern. Their HD study indicated there wasn't one. The next step would be for them to submit that to TDEC and make sure that TDEC concurs with the findings of that report. The future development, of course, if it does get approved, would come back in a later date to submit any technical documents to show that stormwater is being managed on-site. As you know, our stormwater ordinance says that property that currently receives water, retains water, and releases water needs to do so after efforts developed at the very same rate. So you can't just take the water that currently falls on this undeveloped property, or mostly undeveloped property, and push it on your neighbors. The plan, they'll be required to submit a plan that the city will review and ask for changes or modifications to make sure that water's not being just pushed off on the neighbors. It has to be received, retained, and released at the same rate that it is today. The PUD allows an opportunity for developers to request exceptions to our development procedures or exceptions to policies, and so we ask for those to be identified early on. We suggested to the design team that RS 15 was the most comparable zone to what they're proposing, even though they're doing 10,000, 12,000 square foot lots. We use that as a model, and so the exception that they're requesting is to reduce the front setback from 35 feet to 25 feet for the house, not for the garage. So the garage will maintain the 35-foot setback, which keeps that opportunity to have the additional parking on each lot, but the houses may project a little bit closer, and we see that in many developments. Also, to reduce the side setback from 10 feet to 5 feet, increase the maximum height from 35 feet to 40 feet, decrease the minimum lot width from 70 feet to 65 feet, and increase the maximum lot coverage from 25% to 33%. Currently, we look at two future land use maps when we review properties. We look at the one that was adopted in 2015, and we look at the one that is currently under review by our Planning Commission City Council. Both the existing future land use map and the proposed future land use map recommend a suburban-style development for this property, and these lots are consistent with both future land use maps. A suburban-style lot would be a 10, 12, or 15,000 square foot lot, and so these would fall into that category. So when the Planning Commission, after you have your public hearing, when you consider this item, planning staff requests that you consider that the proposed development types and characteristics are consistent with the existing and the proposed future land use map, and of course, consider the appropriateness of any of the exceptions they requested. The applicant does have a presentation that they'd like to dive into a little bit more of the details of the development itself. They'd like to present that to you before your public hearing, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have either before or after the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Any questions for Ms. Green before we hear from the developer? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Roundtree. How are you?
Very well, Chairman Jones. Clyde Roundtree with Huddles and Steel Engineering. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you the North Ridge Park subdivision. I'm excited about this, you know, how we're doing in the city. There's so many times where we have projects that are really just pushing the envelope in so many ways as far as density. This is one that I'm representing that actually fits really well within a lot of our density requirements. The quality of homes are fantastic. I think it's a great utilization of this property, and Gien Holmes has been very great to work with so far. They're, like Margaret Ann said, they're new out of Dallas, so they're coming into this area. They know it's a good market. They come in in Dallas, which I think I've mentioned at the Planning Commission workshop, that Dallas, a lot of the homes are front-entry. It doesn't really matter the price point, but they're coming in with front-entry garages. And so our original proposal was basically all front-entry garages, and after looking at, working with the staff, planning staff, working through the process, and really looking at the adjacent neighborhoods, we came to the realization that, you know, there's more older homes, ranch-style homes, none of them are really front-entry garages. So that was a major concession that Gien was willing to make on the front end. So we, majority of the homes are going to be side-entry garages with a few front-entry garages where we had to do it based on the width of the lot. So with that in mind, I don't want to be too redundant with Margaret Ann's presentation, but I'll run through a few highlights. As far as adjacent relationships, this is a wide-open pasture land. There is some, there's a home with a little bit of a, some type of excavation business working off to the side, but it's a lot that's been under a lot of scrutiny for a lot of time. A lot of developers have looked at this lot. We're excited about seeing it getting developed. It has a flag that goes out to Memorial Boulevard that will tie in directly across Osborne Lane, which is a critical connector. I know a lot of the folks that are here tonight are really, you know, concerned about the amount of cross-connectivity that will happen on this lot. We feel like that cross-connectivity is very important, but we feel like Osborne Lane will be a real asset to the whole area to get out to that traffic light. If you look at the Slide A, that's really just showing our connection onto Osborne Lane. That's from the church parking lot where we had the neighborhood meeting. And Slide B is really, there's a big vacant lot next to the church. That's where the CF zoning is and where the Commercial Fringe and Commercial Highway zoning is. So that's going to stay intact. That's not a part of our requested rezoning, as Margaret Ann mentioned, but that is planned to be developed as part of this process.
Sir, someone just started talking. You didn't even understand.
Okay. I'll speak a little slower, a little louder. Thank you.
Yeah, it can be turned.
I will talk louder, I think. Let me just talk louder. Thank you. As far as, I don't want to go through every picture, but we were really graciously hosted by the church. We had a very active neighborhood meeting. Wow, that's hot. That's a good mic. And so, you can't tell what I'm thinking, right? So with that in mind, it was, it was an active meeting, well-participated. I think we had a lot of chance to field a lot of questions, and obviously, traffic was a major concern at this location, and we'll hear about that as the folks come up. I did want to mention that we have a representation from Gien Holmes here, that if you have any questions specifically about their business and introduction to Nashville area, Murfreesboro, they'd be glad to speak to you as well. And Mr. Lynch, who is from Gien Holmes, was at our neighborhood meeting, so he was able to participate fully in that process as well. As far as the overall site plan, I think a few things to note. We did our best. There's been a lot of, we've gone through a lot of rendition of this, making sure that all of our internal access roads have the right distances between intersections, trying to work out the alignment to make sure we maximize the site as far as lot sizes. And as Margaret Ann mentioned, the orange lots are the ones where the front-entry garages still remain, all the blue lots where there's going to be side-entry garages. The green area is the amenity area and the stormwater area, and we have a little slide about that as well. When it, when we're talking about these homes, these are really, really nice homes. Gien comes in with a, it's really more of an estate-style home, a minimum square footage of 23,000 or 2,350 square feet, so that's the starting point. They're all two stories. A lot of their homes originally that is shown were front-entry garages. They've, they've changed them to allow us to show what it looked like from a side-entry garage. They have mixed materials on the front, all masonry, but it'll be a combination of brick and hardy stone. As you can see, a very different roofline components, a very active front facade, so a lot of dynamics. I think it brings the quality of the neighborhood up, and I think it really, it has a great presentation from the road. As we mentioned, the homes are larger, so we're asking for a reduction in the amount of coverage or enhanced amount of coverage that we're allowed to have. Also, because of the size of the homes, they're a little wider, the lot's been a little narrower, the home's a little wider, we're asking for that side setback reduction as well. Price point, based on current market research, is they're going to start right at around 700 and go up. One of the concerns that the neighbors had is what the impact would be on their property value. Would this be a reduction in their property value? We feel like this will be a, this will be a really good thing from a financial standpoint for the adjacent neighbors, is this will be something that would really boost up your property value. These are two other different models. You see the various combinations of brick and stone and hardy board as well. All of them have front stoop landings, decorative garage doors if it faces the road. There is one that shows a front-entry garage, so you can kind of see how that would look as well. But really, really happy that we're getting to present a product of home of this kind of caliber and scale. I think neighbors were pleased, were pleased to see this. I think the neighbors are also pleased to see that it's going to single-family detached homes. So that's really the highlight of the neighborhood meeting. Again, there were several concerns, mostly over traffic, a few over drainage, but we'll hear about those concerns as well. The amenity area is on the back portion, that green portion that was on the, on the overall site plan. It'll be a mail kiosk associated with a covered pavilion. There'll be picnic tables in the pavilion with some seating outside of the pavilion. There's green space behind the pavilion just for community gathering. One of the questions that we had with staff, staff would like us to create more of a parking lot versus a back-in, back-out type of parking scenario. We feel like with the volume of traffic that's coming into the development, to have head in parking is not going to be an issue. We'd rather preserve that green space for activity versus taking a majority of that green space for parking. On the bottom right-hand corner, that is a sign that's being proposed. There will be a lot dedicated, a portion of a lot dedicated on the entrance drive-in coming off of Osborne where the sign-ins will take place. As far as landscaping is concerned, we'd like to propose that we have some kind of a streetscape component, shade trees along the roadway to kind of give it that quality, a little bit more of a quality as it matures, it'll be more consistent with the adjacent neighborhood, and there'll be landscaping around the amenity area. And as far as the exceptions are concerned, as Margaret Ann mentioned, I think I've got a list of them here. We are asking for, the biggest one is that reduce that front setback that allows us to move the house a little bit forward, the garage recessed back a little bit further so we can accommodate the four cars in the parking garage, because now they'll be coming in from the side of the house. And the five-foot side setback, it gives us the flexibility for the homes to fit on the lot comfortably, and it, because they're larger homes, it gives us a little bit more play. We may not use all the five-foot. We may have more buffer, you know, more side setback than needed, but we want to ask for that request for the extremes. And again, the lot coverage is a concern, and make sure we can put the homes large enough on the lots that they look comfortable on the lot, but we can build the home size that Gien's used to. The height is an interesting one. These homes have a little bit more of a vertical nature, so the extra additional height is something that is kind of unique to this product, but again, it gives us some flexibility that they can build a style home. They've been building in Dallas. So with that concern, any other concerns you may have? I'm here for any questions. Again, Mr. Chris Lynch is here from Gien Holmes. If you have any questions of him, and as the neighbors come up and respond, if it's something we can answer directly, we will. But we thank you for the opportunity to present North Ridge Park and available for any questions you may have.
Clyde, if it, if it stayed RS 15, do you have any idea? I see on here that, I mean, you're actually, if it was RS 12, your density's even lower than what it would be at RS 12. Do you have any idea what the density would be at RS 15?
Ken, I don't offhand. I think it was about 10 units potential difference. It wasn't, it wasn't a radical shift in the overall yield on the lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Clyde, I got a question. This may be for staff. I got an email about Banner and the length of Banner without many changes in curves or anything like that, any kind of traffic calming. So do we have any, like I said, this may be for staff, any kind of traffic calming measures for Banner Drive?
Mr. Wright, I think the only thing we did was there's a jog in that road to kind of, you know, not make it a straight shot, but allow it to have a little bit of a jog. And then by having different access points along it, we feel like, and I, am I addressing the right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think by having three different intersections where there's potential people driving in, it'll have the perception of it being more of a neighborhood street versus a cut-through.
Okay.
And Mr. Roundtree, just on the amenity area, it looks like there's just three parking spaces there, and I think we don't know, you know, this new, having your mailbox in a community area is new for all of us, so we'll kind of see how that all plays out, but it does seem like that's, you know, if you had a family having some sort of planned event in the pavilion, and it's 5:00 and everybody's stopping after work to get their mail, there's really not a, you know, I don't feel like the parking is sufficient right there. And it kind of looks like, I can't see how that amenity area that's shown on page 15 doesn't look like it quite fits in the footprint that we're looking at on page 11. So just something to think about as we go through, maybe address later.
I, we may be able to, Chairman Jones, we may be able to move that parking down further. What you see is the amenity area that's designated beyond that point is stormwater, so there's quite a bit of green space in that, kind of the northwestern corner. If we can potentially, we just don't want to have to pull in and then double-load and literally lose probably 50 to 60% of the green space that's associated with the amenity center, but there may be an opportunity for us to move parking further down that road towards the right, because that is the stormwater area. And it's a pretty large, it's over two acres of green space associated with the pond and the amenity area, so there may be some room to move those down.
But you're saying that the amenity area, if I'm looking at page 11, is the amenity area that you're showing on page 15 just within the dashed line that looked like it was a lot at one point? Is that where the pavilion sits and the park-in spaces?
Yes.
And the rest of that is literally open space and?
The stormwater.
Attention, storm. Okay. Well, let's see how that works out. I just still feel like that might be an issue, but any other questions before we open the public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. So next, we will be going to the public hearing portion of this, and if I had to guess, I'd say the majority of people here tonight are here to speak on this item. So we do want to make sure that everybody that would like to get up and speak has the opportunity to speak. When you choose to get up and speak, you'll come to the podium, and you will state your name and your address, and you will make your comments directly to the Planning Commission, not to other members of the audience, not to the developers, et cetera. We'll make note of any questions that you have. You'll have three minutes each to give us your comments. We'll make note of questions that you have during your comments, and we will address all of those at the end of the public hearing. So we will not stop with each question you ask and answer that at that time, if that makes sense. Also, one thing that I always forget to mention is, once we close the public hearing and then the Planning Commission starts discussing the items, and we may be discussing back-and-forth with the developer and asking them questions, at that point, the public hearing is already closed, and so you cannot get up again or continue to ask questions from the floor. So with that being said, if that makes, all, makes good sense, we will open the public hearing and ask anybody that would like to speak on this item to come forward to the podium, state your name and address. Somebody's got to start. Welcome.
Somebody has to go first.
That's right.
My name is Beverly Burke. Live at 2822 Regency Park Drive. This is at the southwest corner and adjacent to the proposed development. My husband, Rick Moffett, and I have owned and lived in this home for 29 years. We appreciated that we had the neighborhood meeting before and had the opportunity to speak our concerns. I believe that it's critically important to hear from the neighborhood and especially to hear from those people who live adjacent to this property, which is proposing to be The reason, one of the reasons that it's so important for us to have the opportunity to speak is that we do know things that you can't tell from a map or a satellite view or even visiting, because we've lived there all these years. We see where the water flows and where the water collects when there are heavy rains. We see things looking out our windows year after year, and we want everyone to ask us questions, the city and the developer, and we want to do that because it has a profound effect on us, especially those of us that are adjacent to it. And, you know, there are things that you just can't know or see unless you talk to the people who live there. The adjacent properties have specific concerns. I won't go into a lot about that because they're unique to each property. For example, we have an unusually shallow lot. So the, a large house, a tall house on a small lot will be just a few feet from our house and our patio and our swimming pool. One question I would have is that can there be a limit to the distance between my house and any new house built? My greatest concern is the potential for flooding, and we all know, all of the neighbors, we talked about quite a bit at our neighborhood meeting about the concerns about the flooding. There are existing problems. Okay? So this is not just a concern of the developer, this is a concern of the city. The city needs to pay close attention to the potential for flooding. Let us show you where the problems are. For example, if you stand at the end of Banner and you look out, the land slopes up, and to the right is a ditch that's too small to carry the water, and it overflows. This didn't come out in any of the application that talked about the water courses and those kinds of things. It didn't address the southwest corner at all. It's a problem, and the people who live along that ditch have problems. Dense development will worsen the water flow problems that we already have. And so my biggest question is, how are we going to be assured that this development is not going to flood the homes that exist and then flood, and also flood new homes that are developed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Appreciate it.
So my name is Karen Bingham. I am at 2903 Amber Drive. I am on that same ditch that Beverly referred to, so my major concern is also the drainage and flooding. Flooding is widespread in Palmer Heights and Regency Park. Beverly's points are well-taken that you don't see that unless you live there during heavy rains. My home is surrounded on all four sides by rushing water because the current drainage system does not accommodate the overflow. It just doesn't. So my question is the same. I also would like some assurances from the city that there will be very stringent oversight of the, the stormwater drainage system and whether or not that adds anything. My house is one of the few in the neighborhood that's on a slab. Currently, when it have, there are heavy rains, it comes within inches of my front door, so any additional runoff will be an issue for me. My second, second concern is about the stub streets. I know that's been addressed. know that's been addressed. Palmer Heights is an older established neighborhood with very narrow streets. I've got some photos I can leave for you. Um, it will not accommodate a lot of extra traffic, particularly because people from that neighborhood, as well as surrounding ones, come into Palmer Heights to walk, run, and bike, because none of the streets emptied directly into the major surrounding arteries. So, I would actually like to see an amendment to this proposal that deletes the stub street entrances on Archer and Amber, because they don't go directly anywhere. It's not going to provide a very efficient means for people to get around anyway. Um, and I, I would like to know whether or not some traffic study can be done about that, and consideration given to deleting those, since there will be so many other, uh, access points into the new development as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bingham.
Hello. Uh, my name is Mike Bacon. I'm at two-eight-one-four Archer Avenue. And I'll just, uh, want to follow up on what she was saying. I live on the very end of Archer, where it dead ends. And I know I heard him say earlier that there's an ordinance that says that all through streets will go through. But I'd just like to echo that this subdivision was built in the mid-seventies. The streets were, are narrower. Uh, and I heard the developer talk about how the, the excess, for ex, you get people out of the new neighborhood easy, but it's, I'm more concerned about, you're creating a path where people are going to come down Osborne, that I hear Memorial, I, I back up to Memorial with the land between me and Memorial. I hear Memorial all the time. So, people are buzzing down Memorial, turning right on Haynes and flying down Haynes. You're creating a path, if you put Archer through, that'll, people will shoot right across, they'll turn left on, will be the new Archer, buzz right through Archer, take, take a quick left on Morgan, just to try to beat the light. I, it, that traffic down through there is like that all the time. So, you're going to create even a worse pattern to happen if you put Archer through. So, uh, so that's one concern. The other concern I have is also echoed on flooding. Um, the last house on Archer, I've seen it since I've lived there. The, the water comes rushing when you get a heavy rain. That Palmer Heights is sloped, basically right down to my lot. It's, I've never flooded at all, but I go, water rushes down through there and turns, uh, right beside my house. Now, the issue is that you've got commercial property right behind me that's not developed yet, and now you're developing this property. So, so the concern I have is that they're not, we don't know what's going to happen with the commercial property. So, we got to make sure that when we develop this property, it doesn't do anything. And I know the plan is that it won't make things worse, but I'm just here to be concerned about that and, and make sure aware that it's, it's within a few feet of my house rushing around when it rain, rains a lot. And anything that happens on the property just now to my north will have a drastic impact to that. So, the other, the last thing I'd say is, I am a little confused when I hear that we're asking for a change to reduce lot sizes, and everything else is R-15 all around their area. And yet, we're making, wanting concessions to make sure the houses can be built on those lot sizes that are even out of bounds of that. So, uh, so I'm not saying that, I can't say that I really support that we should be changing. It seems like you should stay. Everything else is R-15 already, and I feel like we ought to stay there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon.
Hello. My name is Darla Enick. I live at four-oh-six Blue Bell Avenue. Um, I know a lot of people in this room have lived in Palmer Heights for a very long time, but I might have some of them beat because my parents bought their house in nineteen-seventy-nine when I was two years old. So, between that and buying the home across the street from them six years ago, I've been there most of my life. And I just really want to say that, um, I've walked, I'm a walker. I've walked that neighborhood, and the streets in Palmer Heights are not wide enough to stub those streets through to connect to the new neighborhood. If two cars are coming along at the same time, there's no curb. It's just, I'm, I'm over in the ditch. And I know there's, it's not myself. There's children. There's bikers. There's walkers. There's elderly people in the neighborhood. And I just think that Palmer Heights can stay intact as it is, and this new wonderful development that's going to be an attribute to the north side can happen. Um, but I don't think that it needs to necessarily impact what's happening in Palmer Heights. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Enick.
My name is Rick Moffett. I live at twenty-eight, twenty-two Regency Park Drive, and I'm actually Beverly Burke's husband. Um, a picture sometimes speaks volumes more than words, and I have some pictures from flooding, if I could go ahead and have that presented to the commission. If you, those are multiple copies, so if you could kind of share those around. Sorry, I didn't make enough copies for everybody, but, uh, if you could kind of check that out. Uh, Beverly mentioned that, uh, one of the major concerns we have, and a lot of our neighbors have actually, is flooding. Uh, and I would like to go ahead and, and have you look at those, uh, pictures. Those pictures were taken, uh, at our home in twenty-ten. That was the great flood. Um, we know, however, the extreme weather is getting worse and more frequently. Um, and it will happen again. I wanted to bring this to attention to the, uh, City Planning Commission, and I'm sorry, I should have said, thank you very much for, uh, holding the hearing and having our neighbors, uh, come and talk to you. It's very important. You folks represent us in terms of government, and we really appreciate that. Um, I'll be very short here. Uh, I, I think it's going to be important for the developers to go ahead and take all necessary steps to avoid exacerbating a, uh, a, uh, very significant flooding problem and avoid damage to the homes and property of the citizens that you represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Moffett.
My name is Don Craig. I've lived in Murfreesboro for fifty years. This is the first time I've ever had, uh, a reason to be concerned with zoning. So, I'm not always familiar with what goes on with the planning commission, what projects you rezone and what projects you don't rezone. Uh, I would like to say, though, that, uh, this particular request calls for an increase in the density, uh, of homes within an area that's surrounded by RS-15, as a gentleman pointed out before. Uh, I don't know whether the planning commission normally does this kind of thing or not, but it doesn't seem like it would be advisable to me. Uh, if it's been done in the past, uh, I'd like to see some examples of it, where a, a parcel of land that's surrounded by one zoning is, is increased in density when it's rezoned. Uh, if it hasn't been done, then, then perhaps this is going to be a precedent that you're going to set if you do this rezoning. Uh, I won't take, uh, time to go into, uh, flooding issues or traffic. Uh, I've lived there in that, my, uh, home for thirty years that adjoins the project that's being proposed. I've, I've witnessed the flooding. Uh, I've witnessed the tremendous increase in traffic on Regal Drive, where I live, especially during times when schools are starting and when schools are ending. The building of the schools, uh, over on Thompson Lane have significantly increased the cut-through traffic, uh, from Regal, from Memorial to Regal, and then over to Thompson Lane to get in line to pick up children. So, that any increase in traffic on, on Regal is just really not, not acceptable to the neighbors that live over there. Uh, the project sounds great, but I think it's going to impact the quality of the neighborhood that we already have and that we've had for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is John Baker. Uh, I'm the president of the Regionwood Subdivision Homeowners Association. I live at twenty-nine-twenty-three Canterbury Court, uh, in, in Regionwood. And, uh, I've been asked to, uh, speak tonight on, on behalf of the, uh, the neigh, the, the neighborhood. But, uh, the, uh, the main thing I want to speak to is Banner Drive. I know there are other concerns and other issues. Our main concern has been what is basically a long straightaway coming from the entry of this, uh, subdivision off of Memorial, all the way down to Regionwood. Uh, that's basically, when you look at the design map, is going to be one long straightaway. Uh, currently, other than what I assume will be some sort of, uh, intersection design at, uh, Regency Park Drive and Banner Drive, I, I don't see anything on here that slows the traffic or creates any calming effect, uh, at all. It is true that these are, uh, neighborhood streets, but Nate Banner is currently a neighborhood street, and we're already dealing with this issue without the extension. Now, we're extending it up by the heavy traffic of Memorial. All we're going to do is encourage people to use that as a cut-through coming from Memorial all the way down, uh, Banner to Regionwood, over to Sulphur Springs, over to the Segal High School, or Thompson Lane, or wherever it is they may be wanting to go. Uh, and, and, and this is going to be inevitable if we don't put something in this to slow down and discourage people from doing that in the design. But right now, I don't see anything on the Banner Drive portion of this that does anything to discourage people from, uh, from, from, uh, using that as a thoroughfare or from speeding down there, other than perhaps whatever the stop's going to be at Regency Park and Banner. But, uh, if you go from Regionwood all the way up to Regency Park Drive, that's about four tenths of a mile. And then if you extend that on up close to Memorial, it's going to be close to a, a full mile stretch there. It's going to be basically one long straightaway. Uh, there is a very, very minor slight curve in the proposed development on Banner, but when you look at it, I mean, there's nothing on that curve that would slow traffic at all. So, something's going to need to be done to, uh, to what I hope i- is to create, if we're going to do the extension like that, to create a calming effect. And, and, yeah, we could put a bunch of stop signs at all the various intersections, uh, in the development. But, you know, stop signs, uh, people run stop signs. That doesn't, uh, keep people from, um, slowing down. We need something that naturally, uh, will produce a calming, uh, s- speed and, and will discourage thoroughfare. And I think there are other modern road design concepts that we have out there. Anything from, you know, roundabouts, uh, and I'm not an engineer by any stretch of the imagination, so I didn't, I'm not an expert at all in any of that. But, you know, I pulled up these other concepts. There's traffic circles. There are these things called chokers. There's lane narrowing. There's these things called chicane. There's all kinds of things the engineers know how to, to, to keep these things from happening. So, if, if the, uh, so I would certainly hope that the, uh, that, that those modifications be made, so we don't create this long straightaway going from near Memorial all the way down to, to Regionwood, because it's going to be a, a disaster for the people who live on that road. Uh, we, Regency Park and Regionwood do not have sidewalks, okay? So, if, if you live in those neighborhoods, people are walking their kids. They're in strollers. They got dogs, uh, ride bicycles. We got three major public schools up there with kids all over the place in the mornings and the afternoons. Segal High School kids do cross-country, uh, practice all through these neighborhoods. If we don't, if we make, if we extend Banner, it's just going to make it much worse than it already is. We can't undo Banner the way it is. I don't think it would be designed the way it is right now if we were designing it today. But that is what it is. But we can certainly, uh, do something now for, for any extensions of Banner. And so, uh, I would just encourage the, uh, commission to do that, um, and then the engineers and the city planners and the people that are in charge of that. Uh, I, I would like to say also that, uh, I think the concept of, of single-family homes, uh, is good. Uh, I don't, you know, we, we certainly prefer that over more dense development like apartments. So, I'm certainly not up here, uh, opposing this as a concept. I'm just opposing the traffic situation that Banner is going to propose. Uh, another thing on that, I, I was thinking about this when I was driving over. I had some friends that lived in Innsbruck off of, uh, South Church. And, you know, when you go in that main entrance on Innsbruck where the Kroger is, they actually have a roundabout right there that slows people down. And when you get in there, there's really not a place where you can just take off. But people will be able to take off like that if they go down Banner. And, uh, but that's all I really had to say. But again, thank you for your consideration and hope you take our concerns, uh, to heart of it.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
My name is David Montabano. I'm at eight-twenty-six Banner Drive. Uh, I moved into the neighborhood in, uh, October of nineteen-ninety-five, and I've enjoyed that neighborhood. Uh, and what I, I just, John said it beautifully, and I just want to add one thing to that. If you take Banner Drive and you go straight from Memorial, you're going to encourage people from those subdivisions on the other side of Osborne, twice a day, they'll be able to skip three school zones. So, that's encouraging them to use Banner than to use Haynes or to go down Thompson Lane. And as you know, if you go down Banner, it, it'll dog lag right into Sulphur Springs, which will go straight into, uh, into Thompson Lane. And they've already added, uh, on Breckenridge, three speed bumps. So, I think we'll be encouraging this bad behavior if we, if we make that straightaway. That's the only thing I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm, uh, John Farmer. I live at three-fourteen Regal Drive. Uh, been there since nineteen-ninety-three. Uh, the traffic issue is one of my main concerns and a safety issue. The north exit out of this planned community goes on to Regal Drive, which is also, is a very high traffic from Memorial to Regency Park. So, as people come out of that neighborhood, they can only do one thing, or two things. Turn right to go to Memorial, which does not have a red light, or turn left to go to Regency Park Drive, which we already have two exits out the west side of this development going to Regency Park. Regency Park runs from Haynes to Thompson with no red lights, no stop signs. Memorial runs from Haynes to Thompson with at least four head, uh, stoplights. And people are bypassing the Memorial Drive traffic and now coming through Regency Park because of not having the stopping issue or the traffic issue. And as one of the previous, uh, folks said, we have a neighborhood community with high traffic volume, children, no sidewalks. We just spent no telling how many thousands of dollars to put sidewalks on both sides of Memorial, but we haven't done anything in Regency Park or the adjoining neighborhoods. So, safety is an issue, and the traffic is certainly going to be a major factor if all these openings to this new development are planned. And I also question if we're rezoning from R-15 to RD, and we still got to make it, and exceptions to accommodate them, maybe this is not the right zoning for this property. And we thank you very much for listening to us.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer.
Good evening. I'm John Russell Montgomery. I live at eight-two-two Banner Drive. And I, my main concern is, of course, the traffic. And I'd just like to say, you know, Banner is already being used as a through street. And, and I know I can't stop progress on this particular lot. Something is going to be built there sooner or later. But I would ask you to really think about this, because Memorial and, um, and the other street, Osborne, is really going to generate a lot of traffic. And you give them an opportunity of having a straight shot. Those people are really going to come through there connecting over to Thompson Lane and, and beyond. And really, I'm more concerned, most concerned about the people that use it as a through street, not so much about the people that already live there like us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, friends and neighbors. Um, my name is Cynthia Hollis. I live on Blue Bell Avenue, one of nine homes that are going to back up to this subdivision. Uh, this is the second time I've been at a ci- city meeting where I moved into a neighborhood and they built a subdivision around me. So, here- So here I go again. It seems like they're going to build nice homes. I hope they do address the flooding issue. I know about that, but because before I bought my home, the inspection showed that the front half of the house was sinking, and I just spent $24,000 to jack up the front of my house so it doesn't sink in the mud anymore. As far as the entrances go, you know, I agree with everyone here. They have their objections, but they're real objections. Anyone who lives in the Palmer Heights area, the only road that goes to Haynes is Morgan. And I measured it, Morgan's only about 25 feet wide, has no curb, and yes, there's a lot of walkers, bikers, dogs, things like that. And it's a nice neighborhood. We all wave, we all say hi, we all give each other tomatoes and things like that. I love this. It's a neighborhood, not a subdivision. But as far as the entrances go, I can see where Amber and Archer seem innocuous, because it would serve so few home sites in that subdivision as it is plotted out now. And they would also have to take Morgan to go to Haynes. At Haynes is an accident waiting to happen. I took a picture of, just this afternoon, didn't take long. At the stop sign, where y'all know, you're coming off of Morgan where it stops at Haynes and you have to turn either right or left. You're lucky to turn right, because there's a whole lot of traffic coming from the left, especially 4:00, 5:00 in the afternoon. But if you want to turn left, this is the problem. How many cars you see coming?
Two. If you can make all your comments to the planning commission, please.
You see two cars coming.
Ma'am, all your comments to the planning commission. Thank you.
Yes. You see two cars coming? And you don't see that big black truck behind them, do you? When there's a dark car coming with no daylight running lights on, you can't see it coming through that foliage. And this was in the fall, where a lot of that foliage had dropped already and some sunlight was coming through. Can anybody concur with me?
Again, again.
That's a dark fence.
And I'm sorry, Cynthia. Cynthia, I only got your first name. I apologize. Cynthia, on Blue Bell Avenue. Make your comments to the planning commission, please.
I'm sorry.
Do not request comments from the audience.
I'm sorry.
Comments to the planning commission.
I understand now. Are the developers here?
Developers are here. Again, comments to the planning commission, though, not to the developers.
Okay, well, you know, visual aids.
Yes.
Okay. So I can see the objections of people who live in the Palmer Heights area. Morgan is not a good choice for an access road. It seems logical to use Regency Park, because it's 40 feet wide and has curbs, but I'd feel sorry for those people at Regency Park. They do have a turn lane on Haynes. That helps a little, but there's already traffic there. Other subdivisions this large have one entrance. Why can't they have their main entrance with, off of Memorial with the stoplights and turn lanes, everything they need? People will go to where their home is. They'll do whatever they have to do to go where their home is. This development could get by with one or two entrances. That was my main thing about the traffic on Haynes. Very difficult to get out of. The tree line behind us on Blue Bell.
And you'll need to hurry up and...
Pardon?
Go ahead and quickly make any other comments. You're beyond your three minutes.
Yes. The tree line behind us on Blue Bell has been neglected for 40, 50 years, and the trees have been a threat, at least behind my house and my neighbors. They've been a threat for falling this way or that way. One of the large trees came down and fortunately away from the house, but it destroyed my chain-linked fence to the point I can't let dogs back there. And I can't even put up a new fence until I know what the developer's going to do. All right. So I hope that they do plant a nice array of buffers there between us and eliminate the trees that are half-falling out, half-dead, leaning this way or that way. One of them almost fell on my motorhome. I have a video of that. But I moved it and I heard the cracking, and I moved the motorhome. Five minutes later, it fell where the motorhome was parked. So they're a threat, some of those trees, to both properties. And that's my two cents.
So you're asking for tree lines to be removed?
Pardon?
Tree lines to be potentially removed.
At least the bad trees. There are some nice trees out there.
Okay.
Behind mine is...
Thank you so much.
They're not pretty.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak tonight?
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Pat Bacon. I'm at 2814 Archer. And a couple of things really quickly. We have talked about the size of the streets being different. My husband and I took a walk today, and we measured in front of our home at Archer, which will be the blunt street that will be taken through on this plan. It is 20 feet. If you go to Banner, it's 40. So you see the differences. I want to give you a realistic visual in your mind as far as numbers, as the difference, as the traffic that will be coming through. It has been stated that we have a flooding problem. I cannot emphasize that enough. The water rushes past our house, and there is a pond area behind our house on the Osso property. It puddles back there. It puddles in my backyard. It dissipates rather quickly in my backyard. It has never gone under my house. We've had work done under the house. People have checked. There's not been any evidence of water under my house at this point. I have also been led in the impression that there will not be any blasting necessary. If there is blasting, I don't think anyone here is naive enough to not think that will be affecting the existing homes. And my foundation's very solid, and so of course, that is a concern. And the other thing that will be addressed here by my husband and I is that the tree line is something that we personally want to protect. I know there's several neighbors that spoke up at the last meeting, and these gentlemen were very kind. They said the health of the trees, the overall threats to the new homes and our homes would be looked at, and that they would work with us very well to make sure that if we went to hold on to our tree line, that that would be done. So that is something that I just want to add to this. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. We have a great deal of respect, and I understand the pressure that this puts on. We do not want to stop this development. We want to be aware of the effects and the potential big concerns of flooding and traffic that this will present to a neighborhood that has been here since the 70s. And there are a lot of people that this is going to affect that are existing homes. We want to welcome our new neighbors. We want to be welcoming to everyone. But we also want you to, putting the bullet on your back, be very, very, very aware of the emphasis of taking all of these streets through. Is that really necessary? Are there other options that we can explore? And when we do empty this traffic into these smaller streets, what that will do to safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Hi, I'm Pete Troutline. I live at 839 Banner Drive. Obviously, the concern of the traffic. I would like to know, when was the last time, I guess the right word is, these roads designed? I know Banner is the little stub that goes up there, like it's going to go into Memorial eventually, but when was that designed? Was that designed 10 years ago, 20 years, 30 years ago? I mean, we've been there 25 years, so the stub's been there, it's been designed. And when it was designed, things were a lot different in this city. I mean, we know that. And the other thing is, by going from RS-15 down to 12 or 10, and you increase the density, does the planning commission concern itself with the impact on schools? The number of children that, what'd they say, 78 houses are going to push into Segal Elementary? So that's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
My name's Tony Oliver. I live in the field on Amber Drive. So it's going to affect me a whole bunch, just as far as the through streets go. I know they may not do anything about that, but those two streets in particular. And if it's going to affect everybody, Regal, Regency, whatever. But those two streets are really just going to open up a can of worms for that small neighborhood. If it can be changed any way, you know, I think most of us would appreciate it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
My name's Dave Reed. 37 years on Banner Drive, a 710. Seen a lot of development. This development reminds me a lot of when Jameson Place come in. Church is right there by it. They come, the developer come in, wanted to go from RS-12 down to RS-10 as they built out. The neighbors stood together, got that changed. Jameson Place was put in at RS-15. A great addition to our neighborhood. We love our Jameson neighbors. Also, I notice he's wanting, he's the one that put in the request for RS-10, and then he's already put in exemptions to make his houses, like the man spoke earlier, to fit the size of the lots that he asked for. So, you know, I don't understand that, how you could engineer something and then change your mind before you even got it approved. So it looked like he would have known that when he was looking at his paperwork before he turned it in. Maybe if he'd waited longer than two days after the neighborhood meeting, the goal filed this with the city, he would have caught that mistake. Also, living there 37 years, we knew that property would be developed at one time. And yes, I'm concerned about traffic. I've seen traffic, I lived there before Banner went all the way through to Regent Wood. I lived there before Regency went all the way to Thompson Lane. So yeah, we've seen, we was there before the schools were built and the church was built, the Methodist Church. So we've seen a lot of that traffic flow come through. I am concerned about that. And a lot of things, been talked about traffic and drainage, but a lot of things were said the night of the neighborhood meeting about the size of the lots. I don't understand how someone that doesn't live here, maybe never plans to live here, can come in and change a neighborhood where a lot of us have lived three and four decades and even longer. So I would, I would think, I would hope you would really think about this and give it a lot of thought and consideration, and I'd like to see it stayed RS-15.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Anybody else? Almost heard from everybody. We will close the public hearing, and now we will have discussion among the planning commission and possibly ask the developers and the staff more questions as well. I don't know, Ms. Green or Mr. Roundtree, who wants to start on the main issues? Any response regarding particularly drainage and the stub streets? I think we'll have some, most discussion up here at the planning commission. And/or staff regarding stub streets.
First off, we'd like to thank the neighbors. I bet we had 80 to 100 people at the neighborhood meeting. The church hosted us, and it was, it was really a productive time. As far as the drainage, that's probably the easiest one to address in terms of, we know there's concerns, specifically Mrs. Burke's house and Mrs. Bingham's house. We spoke specifically to them. There's two concerns. One's the size of the house in relationship to their house. That's Mrs. Burke's concern. The developer's willing to work with that particular lot to make sure that even the house design that's on that corner would not be something that would be intrusive. And we talked about the possibility that houses have kind of a higher side and a lower side, that on her lot, we'd orient those houses towards making sure the lower roof line is adjacent to her property. So that's a very specific situation that we feel like we can address. The drainage situations over in that southwest corner have been well documented tonight. They're, basically, it's a, in essence, it's an overgrown drainage path that's been basically compromised, and that would have to be opened up and re-vigorated for its proper use. We told the neighbors, I've learned this through the process of development, that whenever, whenever a piece of property's not performing from a drainage standpoint, but it's private, the city really doesn't have any chance to change that dynamic. However, whenever it goes into development, that's our opportunity to correct some past wrongs, maybe mitigate situations that have kind of developed over time. So we told them, and we've had several situations where by developing a property, we were able to mitigate a lot of the concerns from a drainage standpoint, at least to the best of our abilities. We know we're responsible for our water that comes onto our site, but we need to make sure that if there's anything we can do to alleviate some of the pressures that they're experiencing, we will. We're committed to that. We told them that as long, as far as the buffer's concerned, the existing vegetation along the property line, it's in everyone's interest to keep that intact. But we did say that if there's specific situations where by allowing them to kind of swell into our property, it alleviates some drainage pressure on their property. We've done that before in the past where the neighbors said, yes, if you can get water off my lot, it drains into your swell, we're excited. So it's kind of a case-by-case basis, but the intention is to correct those situations, because they have pooling. It's, it's real. I mean, it's not a, it's obvious that it's, they showed us the pictures. We know it's a consistent concern. It's something we feel like we can do our best to address in the process of development. As far as the traffic calming, you know, we've gone through several generations on that. I think that's really a deferring to staff more. But I do feel like the fact that Osborne comes into a T, our access drive, it's going to make people have to stop. And so that's going to, it's not a straight cut through all the way on Banner, all the way through. I think there is an opportunity for people to accelerate once they get onto that road through the subdivision. But I do think it is a subdivision. It'll feel that way, it'll live that way. There'll be people backing out onto that road, so it'll play like a subdivision versus a through street. We will have sidewalks. I didn't mention that in the original presentation, but both sides of the street will have sidewalks. So there will be opportunities for neighbors to actually come into this neighborhood and walk around. But also, I think it presents a perception, when you have shade trees, sidewalks, driveways, it just changes the character of the street. I think it will have a calming effect by nature of just having those elements involved. As far as the trees concerned, they're having trees because there's an older fence line. There's some trees that are in bad shape. We're more than willing to do our best to help out with those situations on a case-by-case basis. Why the exemptions? Basically, what we're running into, that's why I'm saying so many of my projects that I'm involved with are higher density than really, it's just that's where we're trending. And we've gone from, you know, RS-15 lots, and we're down to RS-4 lots in certain situations. So we know that the goal is to try to do as much as we can in terms of development towards single-family detached homes. These are high-quality homes. As a result, they're larger homes, and so with the neighbors' concerns about the size of the lot in relation to the homes, this is all about numbers from the developer's standpoint, to make sure that they can build the quality of home they would like to, that they're used to building. They need a certain amount of density to pull off that, to make the numbers work for them. And at the same time, we feel like this is a exceptional home. I mean, these are not, one thing that the neighbors need to understand is that a planned development puts us under the microscope in terms of quality and some of the assurances that we give to the neighbors. So we have to abide by what is in the planned development book, the pattern book, whereas if it was straight zoning, the regulations are very different. It could be a much different home, a much lower-quality home. That is basically the basic regulations of Murphy's Pearl. So by asking for higher density, we are committed to a higher-quality product at the end of the day. So that is why we're asking for that request in the first place. We know that just the market itself, 15,000 square foot lots are really not even being zoned hardly at all currently. So to see that there's a lot of situations where there's RS-15 going into RS-12, RS-10, that's a fairly common occurrence that I've witnessed in the city versus it being an exception to the rule. I believe that's the ones I can address off the bat. I know, really, the neighborhood meeting was very productive, but we do know there's some very, very specific situations, case by case, that we would like to deal with, with the developer, and he's aware of those situations as well. We'll let staff comment on all the concerns over cross-connectivity. Thank you.
Mr. Roundtree, I have one question I'd just like you to address, because I don't know the answer on the blasting that was referenced. That would be something you could probably tell, that I would have no idea. On the blasting that was referenced, that would be something you could probably tell that I, I wouldn't have no idea.
We, our basic analysis, there's, it's unique to this lot. This is not just one piece of rock that we're so used to in Murfreesboro. This has a lot of overburden. So, there's a chance that there's not going to be a substantial amount of blasting in terms of infrastructure just because it's an old pasture and it actually has a decent amount of natural, natural ground above it. As far as blasting concerns, we would abide by all the regulations that are required by the city in terms of the requirements that are necessary. But we, of all the sites, we feel like this is going to be a minimum situation where blasting is required.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Roundtree?
I got a question for staff just because.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roundtree.
The last gentleman piqued my interest a little bit in bringing up Jameson Place. I just looked up about fifteen random lots in Jameson Place and every one of them was about twelve thousand foot.
Yeah, I think it's RS twelve.
What, what zoning, I don't, it may have even been PRD. What zoning was Jameson Place?
I'll look that up for you right now. I believe it's RS fifteen. Jameson Place is zoned RS fifteen.
The entire part of it?
Yes, sir.
So, Ms. Burke asked the question about how close the new house would be to her either lot line or her house. Of course, we don't know where her house sits on her lot, but, so our rear setback is what?
Fifteen.
Oh, you asking? Well, whoever can answer it.
That house would have its sides who like that.
The minimum building setback for RS fifteen is thirty on the rear, fifteen on the sides. That's for the structure itself. And so, I think in the comments that I heard from Ms. Burke is was that the patio was closer. And patios aren't structures, so they can go closer to the property line. So, if she puts her patio close to the property line, the adjacent house can be up to five feet from the property line. And that would be to the patio, not to the house. It would be further to the house.
If the cable department could have put up my laptop, I've got aerial photo of, of her house.
So, that's a rear. Oh, no, that's a side. She has a corner lot, so the public right-of-way to the north and to, along the west both have forty-foot front setbacks. And then she has two side property lines. Because it's a corner lot, there's no rear property lines. So, those two side property lines have fifteen-foot setbacks to her structure. So, probably her house, you see that close point to the green property line is fifteen feet. And then, I'm trying to see with the lot, which street is on the north? Is that Banner?
Banner.
Okay.
So, I don't, I've got some other questions that were asked. So, Mr. Wright's kind of already asked this question, but, and the, it was addressed to Mr. Roundtree, but I'd like to address it to city staff with respects to Banner Drive. I mean, is there anything that we can do from a calming perspective irrespective of this development or in, in, in coordination with the development?
So, on my screen, I have the, the plan. And so, the concern, I believe, is this street. Is that right? Okay. And so, our subdivision regulations do have a maximum length of a straight street that you can have. And this, this street does not exceed that. I believe it's a thousand feet, but I might have to ask our, our engineers to answer that. So, this does have some curvature in it. And then it does have a stop here. We wanted to make sure it wasn't a straight, my drawings are terrible, sorry. We wanted to make sure it wasn't a straight shot to the, to the signal. But it does have some curvature and then a stop condition here, and then you have turn in here. So, that does provide some calming and it does not exceed that length that we have in our subdivision regulations. So, it does comply with that standard.
But there's nothing else that we can do to the existing Banner Drive, correct?
So, there are kind of two, two scenarios. One is we can require this developer to do things on this property. And we can do that, we, really you, planning commission with these plans. And then we have our public infrastructure department that's really responsible for maintaining existing conditions. Like I heard concerns, and I have for years heard concerns about no sidewalks in Regency Park Drive. And that is really a decision or something that's done by our public infrastructure, our city engineer. And because it's existing infrastructure and they're responsible for preparing a budget and getting it approved by council and allocating funds from that budget. And, and so, existing drainage as well for the neighborhoods. If you have concerns, if, you know, your foundation's failing, it's absolutely something that should be called into our public infrastructure department, regardless of this property, whatever happens with it. So, so existing infrastructure is managed by that public infrastructure department. It's really important. And I think that they're probably aware of some of these conditions because this is a, I think it's established neighborhood. I think it's, it's held up great. It's a place that people want to live. It's a desirable part of town. And we often point to what a great neighbor, what great neighborhoods they are here. And so, they're probably aware of it, but the management of existing infrastructure really is outside of this process and goes back to the city engineer. And they're responsible to communicate that to the city council and allocate prioritized projects and funding. And, but what we do on our end is, you know, if we know about this low area in the corner of the property, when we have this development come up, we look for opportunities to have the developer take on some of those improvements that are immediately adjacent. This developer can't go, you know, twenty lots down and make any kind of improvements. They don't have the right to do that. Those public easements are owned by the city. But if they do have drainage issues here, they can have opportunities to improve that. We do have stormwater management ordinance, and so I heard, what guarantees do we have that they're not going to make it worse? And the guarantee are those ordinances and codes that we have. We now have, where you didn't, when this property was developed, there's probably one city engineer that I, I will say, did not do a thorough review as we do today. We have many engineers on staff. We have extensive review processes, require a lot of documentation, technical plans, that we didn't when the subdivision was originally developed. So, we absolutely will require they can, they conform to our stormwater management program. And that's receiving the rainwater, releasing it, retaining it, releasing it. And so, it cannot make the condition worse. It cannot. That's not, that's not what are, what we can allow. But also, you know, there's that line between public infrastructure that's outside of the realm of this and existing conditions. And, you know, we're aware that, that, that really is something that should be passed to our public infrastructure department. So, that's our guarantee, are those, those requirements and that process, and it's very well vetted. And, and I don't know it as well. Of course, we have staff here who can speak to our stormwater ordinance. But absolutely, it's something going to be there. And that's why there's such a large pond on this property. The, the green area is kind of, I mean, this is really going to be a stormwater pond. It's not going to be usable. And that's because the water, most of the water, you know, there's an anomaly down here that we've talked about. Most of it's going this direction, and they've got to keep it in that pond. They can't just dump it on their neighbors. And that's the reason for it, is it hasn't been fully designed, but they know it needs to happen.
So, my, my last question is, it's not specific to this development, but, so the comment was made, and I've been down Regency Park many times, and there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of stop signs. So, what, what measures or what dictates the city putting a stop sign in a particular intersection on a city street? What, what are the, what are the requirements? What are we looking for to make that happen?
And we have a transportation department with engineers on staff, and Mr. Balachandra is the person in charge of that. And so, when people call us asking about what do we need to do for a stop sign, we, we defer it to him. And I don't know if anybody here today is, is, can answer the question. I think Mr. Gabriel Moore is one of the staff engineers in the planning department that will be reviewing stormwater plans. But when we forward it to Rom, he's got, he does have some, a checklist. You've got to meet the checklist for it.
Good evening, planning commission. Just to speak to that point specifically, it's a warrant process similar to a signalization warranting process.
I'm talking about a stop sign.
It is, same thing, yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a process that goes through to look at the levels of traffic through there.
So, has Regency Park been reviewed at any recent time?
That I do not know. And Mr. Balachandra potentially would know that with infrastructure, but I do not know that.
I'd like to know the answer to that question.
We can, we can get that.
So, Regency Park Drive and then the potential for possibly Banner Drive?
I got a comment about Banner.
Okay, go ahead.
I drive on Banner every day, twice a day, because I am one of the people that cuts through from another adjoining subdivision to take my kids to Silver Springs. It is really difficult to go, to speed down Banner because there are those giant dips in the middle of the road. And in my personal car, I would rip the whole bottom of my car out if I even went close to the speed limit on Banner Drive. If, if I drive my wife's vehicle, I mean, it would be a very rollercoastery ride to go down Banner.
That's what I remember.
So, Banner itself, it, stop signs really, you can't go fast on Banner or you will mess your car up.
On the existing.
Yeah, on the existing road. Now, I do have some concerns with the two connections on Palmer Heights. Just, I've driven over here to look at all these connections multiple times since this has come up. I've met with the neighbors, yes, several neighbors yesterday, walking these roads. And those two roads are, I parked my wife's SUV in the road, in, in the road. There's no way another car could have passed me sitting with my car in the road. And so, that concerns me. And I, I don't think necessarily that this development's going to empty out through Palmer Heights, but I think Palmer Heights would empty out through this development to get traffic, the ride, ease of getting to Memorial or ease of getting to Silver Springs. But those roads are really narrow going in Palmer Heights. So, that, that's a concern of mine is those two connections is, is just literally how narrow those roads are. If you've got people walking in the road, walking in the street because there's no sidewalks and there's ditches on both sides of the road, and you have somebody parking in the road, it, it would be dangerous on those two connections.
And I'll say regarding those, those street changes and roadways and things. I, I live in a subdivision that was developed in the sixties. And when my family moved into that house in the late sixties, the street ended at our house. There was a barbed wire fence across the road, all filled beyond that. Now, all these years of sixteen more phases of the subdivision that went on after that. But my, and I, I live in, on the property where we originally moved in sixty-eight. But in my original part of the subdivision, if I take a right out of my driveway, I am on a road that has the drop-off ditches on either side. We have above-ground utilities, no sidewalks, a very narrow road. You slow down to pass. If I take a left out of my driveway into the new subdivision, the new part of the subdivision, I have a wide road, have curbs and gutters, underground utilities. We're talking night and day. So, I live with that every day. And that is a part of, the people that live in the older part of the neighborhood take, I, I see them walking every morning. All they're doing is walking to get to the new part of the neighborhood where the roads are wider and they can walk without having to worry as much about the traffic. So, the new part of the neighborhood is a benefit to them and to all of us that live in the old part of the neighborhood. I kind of live right in the middle of both. I, I got the best of both worlds, so, you know. But that's just another, I mean, you know, it's just, just another part of it. Because when you live at a dead-end road, it dead-ends there for a reason. That property is going to develop at some point. And even though for my family, it took a year before they, they continued the development. And for you all, it's been twenty or thirty years. So, you, you've gotten quite used to your stub streets. I did want to mention that there was one reference, I think Mr. Farmer talked about. You know, we spent all this money for sidewalks on Memorial and we haven't even come back and put sidewalks into your subdivision or some of the older subdivisions and everything in town. But that was new development that went in on Memorial and the developers would have put those sidewalks in. Is that correct?
I believe he's referring to a state project where the, where the state retrofitted Memorial.
Some Memorial.
Yeah, they, they, they did that up and down the highway and on the areas that had not had sidewalks put in with development over the years.
Well, maybe if all of us want to move to a road like Memorial, we could get sidewalks. Because we've asked for sidewalks in our neighborhood the whole time for all the forty, fifty years we've lived there and still don't have them. So, I'm in that same boat with you all on that. Twenty versus three. And I will say that going from RS fifteen to RS twelve to RS ten is something that we do, you know, and have done fairly regularly as a planning commission. This is not setting a precedent at all to have a, just a one, you know, what I would call step down on the zoning grade from an RS fifteen to an RS twelve or an RS ten. So, I, I don't think we are setting any type of precedence. It's something that we, we do fairly regularly. Does anybody else have any other questions they didn't get answered? Commission?
I'll make another comment.
Please.
Coming from council's point of view, this is exactly the type of development that we've been wanting to have a lot of. We see townhome, neighborhoods all the time. We see RS six, RX, RS eight. We see apart, we've seen apartments. We've wanted nice, large, ten thousand, twelve thousand foot lot subdivisions is what, the kind of the direction that the city council has said. This is what we desire in Murfreesboro. So, this fits exactly what the council's vision of Murfreesboro now is, is some nice ten thousand, twelve thousand foot lots with nice houses on them.
And the fact that they asked for them in a planned development just means that we have some control over the type of houses that get built, what they look like, and, and adding some amenities versus just a, what we would call a straight zoning of RS twelve or RS ten. So, I, too, was personally pleased to see an RS twelve or ten coming through.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll say, at least from my point of view, I would agree with what, what both have said because we, we are seeing lots of townhome developments coming for us. And to see this is a breath of fresh air. I would say, I, I empathize with you on the length of Banner. We need to do whatever we can to get, at, at least at this, the Archer and Dan, I think it's Archer, no, Regency Park and Daner, to get some stop signs there so that you'll have a stopping point for the length of that road. I don't know that the developer will do that, but we need to probably pursue that.
It has to warrant.
Yeah, yeah. You'll want to pursue that. You'll want to put in requests for that.
Well, it'll have to have a stop sign to cross Regency because Regency doesn't have stop signs. So, you'll stop to cross Regency.
Just right, yeah. That'll take care of it soon.
Just to kind of tack on to what you said, Sean, I mean, this is kind of what we see or what, you know, the council wants to see in the vision. You know, I, I empathize as well, especially with the stub streets. I drove the neighborhood today with Mr. Brian Patterson and appreciate his thoughts and concerns. But overall, I think that the, the quality of the project and everything is, is, is worth it. And I'd love to see it go forward.
Are there any other comments or questions before we take a motion?
If there are none, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We thank you all very much for coming out tonight. We thank you all very much for coming out tonight. And I'll see you again. I'll see you again at council. Another opportunity to come speak to the council at the next meeting. But we do have another, our meeting will continue, so as soon as y'all move out, if you can continue your conversations out in the lobby, we'd appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay? Go ahead. Our next item is a zoning application for approximately... You see if those doors will close, please. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next item is a zoning application for approximately 16.01 acres located at 285 North Rutherford Boulevard to be zoned PRD. This is Albion at Murphysboro Apartments PRD, including a PRD amendment of approximately 11.7 acres, rezoning approximately 4.2 acres from RM 16 to PRD, and rezoning approximately 0.02 acres from CU to PRD. Albion of Murphysboro LLC is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Sorry, I thought I was the third item.
Looks like you're two today.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So you may recall, this project we shortly introduced last time. The location is 285 North Rutherford Boulevard, shown here on the ortho map. And you'll notice that the entire apartment complex shows as two different zone districts, however, it is one contiguous parcel of that 16.01 acres. This particular project is looking at both amending their existing PRD and then adding the RM 16 component to the PRD, as well as there is a very small, I want to say like 10-foot-wide portion that touches down to North Rutherford Boulevard. Hence is the reason it's a Rutherford Boulevard address. So it is looking at all of those being one zone district. This particular current density on the site is 15.74 units to the acre. The applicant is requesting the zone changes within the existing complex. And what that would allow them to do is change that density to 22.48 units to the acre by just changing the interior of the units. So the interiors are four-bedroom, four baths that they're looking at changing out. Those would change into one, two, and three bedrooms while reducing the bedroom count. This one, back in March, the council, excuse me, June, actually approved a sewer allocation variance for this particular project. And looking at, because what they've found is by reducing that bedroom count, that anticipated that the sewer impact will be less within the city. And then they're also looking at changing out all of the plumbing fixtures to low-flow devices. So those two items alone would update those. Our current future land use map on this particular project site, as I mentioned last time, is public institutional land use character. And our proposed future modification to that land use plan also is public-private institutional. The reason for that is it's currently in the MTSU's long-range plan as a potential acquisition site. However, the city is not aware of any acquisition of this particular property in any time in the near future. And we believe that the improvements that would be made to this particular project site would enhance the long-term life of the project area. And this is directly adjacent to that campus. Staff has pointed out a couple of highlights that I believe the applicant will go into further. But the two things in the staff report that we have mentioned is that we would work on design details for the trash dumpsters to be in the program book before it does go to council. And then exception number four that they've talked about regarding landscape, staff would like to see modification to that language that talks about staff review specifics would be done during site plan review as an info lot, which may allow for some leniency regarding various plantings. There's a lot of mature growth on this particular site, which has some challenges. If you have all shade areas, you may or may not be able to get some of those things back. And they are looking at where those new HVAC units are, a lot of screening to be done, which is a more permanent solution in that particular vein. Staff is generally supportive of the project as outlined on page five of the project for three reasons. One, the proposed reconfiguration and renovations would allow reinvestment into the complex and allow for the correction of drainage systems that have fallen into disrepair, which I believe the applicant will talk about during their project PowerPoint. Number two, the improvements will extend the useful life of the property by upgrading exterior, existing interior finishes. And that's not just in the units that they're removing the walls and changing the interiors, but all of the units within the entire complex would basically be getting new flooring, new painting, new plumbing fixtures, new cabinet faces, those kinds of things, as well as refreshment to parking lot areas, drainage being the two bigger ones. And then third, that the reduction of that bedroom and restroom counts and conversion to those low-flow devices should reduce the impact on the city sewer, per the information that they have provided to water resources. So with that, I will invite the applicant to come up and present their PowerPoint that they have for the project, which I think is a separate slide.
Hello, Clyde Roundtree with Hudson Steel Engineering. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you the Albion at Murphysboro Apartments. This is another, this will be the third one I've gotten to work on with the bifurcations. This is kind of a new trend we're seeing, and I'm really excited about it, because as we mentioned before, there's been a moratorium on apartments. We've seen a lot of high-density coming in as far as townhomes. And it's neat to see some of these apartments coming back to life. This is a pretty nice facility. If you walked on it, it looks pretty good. It just, it needed a lot of updating. But Albion's new to our area as well. They're out of Chicago. Mr. Justin Tingle is our client here, and also Brick Murphy's here as well. If they have any specific questions about Albion per se, or any kind of legal council questions, Brick's available. So with that in mind, I won't exhaust this over the PowerPoint, but I do want to bring some highlights, as Holly mentioned. Really, I just want to bring, the concern over drainage has become a primary concern. This is the first project that we actually walk through, I think is now becoming a requirement with any sort of bifurcation. If it's going to happen, we do a walkthrough with the planning staff. And Holly was our, she's our planner for this project, so we walked through the whole property with her. She endured an incredibly hot day. Greg was supposed to be there, but he opted out. So, but anyway, he did show up for a little bit. So anyways, but Holly was famished. We were all, we made it through it. It was a very exhaustive trip. But we did, we did notice some concerns, and a lot of that came over drainage. And this was a unique situation. They're using what they call, it's a pervious asphalt. Not really familiar with it, but a lot of it's been used on this project. And so as a result, you know how pervious concrete looks? It looks kind of rough. And so the asphalt follows the same kind of character. When we walked through the site, there was, it looked like it was all silted in, because there's been a lot of poor maintenance. We've realized with these bifurcations, typically these clients are coming in, these businesses are coming in, because they see an opportunity to improve property. But we realized that a lot of these properties have really gone in disrepair, just because of the way that whole death spiral we've learned about works when, you know, whenever the population goes out, people rent the room, they scare off people, there's one person paying rent for a four-bedroom, there's no money to maintain, it just goes down, down, down. This property's not quite as far as some of the other ones we've worked on as far as down, but we do know that some negligence has really caused drainage problems. So Albion's committed, I want to show you what they're committed to, because I think it's really appropriate. There's a list. So our initial plan for the maintenance concerns as far as drainage is to do an overall cleaning. They're under contract with a company to go out and vacuum all the, all the pervious paper, I mean pervious asphalt. And what that is, is basically sucking all the silt out of it, making it so it actually perks again. And then they've scoped all the drainage, you know, as far as seeing what's going on in actual storm drain pipes. And Justin said that they have pulled out an unbelievable amount of silt that's been in these pipes. So it's like a mound of silt that's coming out of these pipes. So we're confident that by being proactive on getting back to the maintenance schedule, it's going to perform well from a drainage standpoint. We have a scapegoat if we need to. There is a, currently a drainage, there's a volleyball court that's actually in a depression on the property right next to the pool. That can be utilized for stormwater if we need to. It can also be expanded for stormwater. It does fill in in certain arranges events as it stands. But it gives us an option, if we run into, that our maintenance procedures, being proactive on that does not solve the problem, we have the ability to utilize a storm pond and help that situation. Also, what we were trying to prevent, it was originally, what was requested is just redo all the porous, you know, porous asphalt. And that was prohibitive for them from a, from a cost standpoint. It was a multimillion-dollar proposition. And we've requested that if we can go through some procedures for mitigating the situation, and if it works, that we'll be okay. And that we can prove it. So we're asked to give some sort of a valuation of performance, whether that is a yearly report, if its core samples through the actual pervious pavement, asphalt to see how it's actually working. Albion's been more than willing to do whatever we're going to need to make sure that you have assurances that the precautions that we've done, the maintenance that we've done, is working. So I just want to let you know that. That's been a major point of concern. And again, it was really brought up because of the walkthrough, and it's pretty obvious that it's underperforming. If perchance we have to move into mitigating measures, they do want to phase that out. If we have to get into more of a retrofit on the parking area, this plan shows how we'd actually go about that. They're asking that they can take it down at certain increments. One thing we're learning with bifurcations, as they remodel, they're displacing a certain population. So they take down buildings one or two or three at a time, remodel that building, reestablish that population, go to the next one. At student housing, it'll probably still remain student housing due to the proximity of the university. But that's just kind of part of the process. So their mitigation measures typically take a little longer, because they're having to kind of displace people in the process and still keep a running facility. So that's one thing they requested. I would give Albion tremendous credit, because they are going in full-sail sweep. This is not just bifurcating a few units. The one I'm working on and companion with this, we're only bifurcating units, we're not, the facility's in pretty good shape. They're coming in and retrofitting the whole deal. I mean, every unit's being touched, new flooring, as was mentioned, new toilets, new appliances, new countertops. It is a, it is a really nice refurbishing of an existing facility. So I'm really happy that they've chosen that course. Of course, with anything, that's all interior. There's a lot of exterior things that have to be addressed. Classics siding damaged, real replaced. Drainage issues, as we mentioned, will be addressed. They're addressing their amenity, their pool is really nice, their amenity center's really nice, their clubhouse is very nice, but they're going ahead and refurbishing the whole clubhouse, refurbishing all the pool area, really bringing it up to speed. And they're excited about that, we're excited about that. As far as one of the exceptions, it shows these two dumpsters, there's dumpsters that's randomly placed around the site that they've kind of inherited. And they just don't seem like there's much rhyme and reason. They're off their pads, there's just, there's just no rhyme and reason. We're going to bring some order to that. We've asked that the two dumpsters that are located along Alumni Drive, which is really the front of the facility, that we go through with the standard Murphysboro all-masonry enclosures, as nice as we can do, that's the city standard. We've asked for additional dumpsters that are around the property, that we don't go through the full masonry scenario. We've asked that we can cluster them and put them behind opaque wall, be it some sort of a wooden fence. But that precludes, there's just so many of them, that it's really cost prohibitive to have to do all masonry, especially when they're really out of any sight from a public right-of-way. So that's been one of the exceptions we requested. The other thing we've asked for, and Holly has mentioned it, when we went to the walkthrough, what we're finding with these old apartments, because of the mature canopy of the trees, because of the fact that they've been apartments for so many years and been neglected, a lot of landscaping's in really bad shape. And so in this situation, there's a lot, basically a lot of landscaping's gone. So we're asking that we don't have to go back and redo all the landscape and refurbish it all and do all foundation planting. We're asking that we would make it safe, because what happens here is all the buffers are all kind of grown over. There are places where people could hide more of those CTEP standards. We want to bring that up to speed, trim up trees, making sure anything that would be, you know, obscuring a window, or obscuring parking or a place where someone would hide, we ought to address those issues. But we're asking that we don't have to redo everything. And Holly mentioned before, meaning that really, we'd probably have a walkthrough with Holly with Brad and kind of see what we need to do from a landscape standpoint to kind of just make sure aesthetically it looks good, but not get caught up into trying to work through a whole system. A lot of times, because of the mature trees, you got root systems and shade, you plant something in there, two years later, it's not going to grow, so it's dead. So we do want to upgrade the facility, we want to make it look as fresh as possible, but that's one of the exceptions we're looking for. So with that in mind, that's just kind of an overview. We're excited, they're excited about coming to Murphysboro. It's been great working with Holly. We've done some thorough, there's been a lot of, a lot of analysis on this project, but the big stickers were really related to the drainage. And we feel like we've taken up, we think we have the mechanism in place that's documented in the pattern book to alleviate those concerns long-term.
Any questions before we open the public hearing?
Yes, so I just want to ask on the, on the clearing out of the landscaping and whatnot. I mean, are we talking about, like, taking out, like, mulch beds and putting in concrete paper, or concrete, for instance, or what?
No, it's primarily along the perimeter where all the existing kind of buffer is now. That's, there's a lot of understory, it's pretty gnarly in there. We would get that cleaned up to where you wouldn't get in your, out of your car, because someone could literally be right in a bush 10 feet away from the parking lot. You know, trying to alleviate those kind of concerns, that's what we're talking about, Chase. Yeah, we're not, we're not removing landscaping and hardscaping something.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Okay. We will open the public hearing on this item and ask if there is anybody that would like to come forward to speak. So we will close the public hearing. Ask for any other comments or questions from the planning commission.
So for me, we talked about it before, but on the pervious concrete. So the main issue with the pervious concrete is it's filled up with silt. Based on the previous owner, that was allowed to happen. What are, what assurances do we have for you, for the future, for the maintenance? Are we putting that in an agreement that we're going to have that in the future? Because that's what happened with this particular unit, is that, you know, they didn't do what they were supposed to do.
The answer is yes. So back when this particular facility was put into place, maintenance agreements for stormwater were not required. Nowadays, they are required for all developments that have any onsite drainage treatment on their site. And so this would be required to have that. And then on water and sewer division, my understanding is they do, kind of making sure that they're doing what they're required to do in that agreement over time. And I don't know if, I'm also seeing Gabriel's head, and Mr. McKnight said that's what we would do with this particular plan as well.
Okay. So the real teeth then is, is if we have an agreement signed, if it does fail, we can fall back on the agreement.
Correct.
Whereas before.
We had no recourse.
They stopped, we have no recourse.
Correct.
Good. The only other question is on landscaping. So I drove the site today. I agree that we don't need to go through a major, major landscape plan, but there seems to be a definite lack of landscaping there. When you look at the buildings themselves, there's just not, well, most of it's died off. So there's just not a whole lot there. Are you going to do any landscaping or?
From what I understand, Lauren, I think we're going to go and have a walkthrough with Brad or with Holly and kind of see what are, I would say that, you know... and kind of see what are, I would say that, you know, the right-of-way, as you go down Alumni Drive, there's really no foundation planting along the front of the building. That would probably be an area of emphasis to have a perception from the road. But I don't know exactly what exactly is going to be required of us, but I think a walkthrough will help us get to that conclusion and see where it's needed. And that's the best answer. There's some additional things we're going to have to do to kind of figure out exactly what that's going to look like, if that makes sense. But we're not, we understand we're going to have to do that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not walking away from the landscaping derelict that's there. We're going to do something other than just doing nothing. Okay. Thank you.
Hopefully they can make sure that's worked out before they get to council. Anything else?
If there is nothing else, I'll move for approval subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Our third and final item tonight is a zoning application for approximately 1.6 acres, located along Veterans Parkway, to be zoned CH simultaneous with annexation. 5.7 acres to be zoned PRD, the Villas at Veterans PRD simultaneous with annexation, and to amend the existing Villas at Veterans PRD zoning on 7.1 acres located along Franklin Road. Harney Homes LLC is the applicant. Ms. Rush?
I'm going to fill in for Ms. Rush tonight.
I didn't see Ms. Rush. Okay.
So good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. Our third and final public hearing tonight is for the Villas at Veterans PRD. And this will look very familiar to you. The area in kind of the greenish turquoise on the map is the original Villas at Veterans PRD that was approved back in late 2021 by the city council. It consists of 49 townhome units. The CH area directly to the front along Veterans Parkway was zoned CH at the same time as the Villas at Veterans. Earlier this year, the applicant, Mr. Harney, and his representative, Mr. Taylor, requested an amendment to the PRD and to annex the property that is to the north, that's in red and orange, and to zone the frontage to Commercial Highway simultaneous with annexation, and to zone the back portion to PRD simultaneous with annexation, and to add it on to the existing PRD. Back on May the 4th, this body, the planning commission, held a public hearing and recommended the approval of the previous version of this. You'll recall during that meeting, there were some issues with the elevations for the single-family detached component of that development. What Mr. Harney presented at that meeting was, in addition to the 49 townhome units, seven additional townhome units and 28 single-family detached homes in a horizontal property regime. Mr. Harney had issues getting his, the elevations updated for the single-family detached homes. The planning commission recommended approval of the zoning request subject to Mr. Harney getting the issues resolved with the single-family detached elevations prior to the city council meeting. Staff did not get those issues resolved with those single-family detached homes. We worked with Mr. Harney, but he was not able to get his design team to generate those elevations. So the zoning request went to the city council on June the 23rd, and council conducted a public hearing and then voted to defer action at that meeting. I think that they expressed concern about the single-family detached component of the development, especially with respect to the elevations and the aesthetics of those single-family detached homes. So Mr. Harney, rather than continuing to work on those detached homes, went back to the drawing board and has submitted a brand-new application, scrapping the idea of those 28 detached homes and instead just adding additional townhomes in the same vein that the same, the exact same product that he has, that he had approved in 2021 for the southern portion of the PRD. So there's been a net increase of seven proposed units. So we went from 49 in the existing plus 35 in the plan that went before you earlier this year to an additional 42 townhome units. So this would put the total density of the project at 91 townhome units for a density of 6.99 dwelling units per acre. The existing 49 units was approved at a density of 6.89 dwelling units per acre. So this is very comparable in density to the density of the original 49-unit PRD. In addition to the modification of the plan to account for all townhomes and the deletion of those single-family homes, this new plan also includes a more robust amenity package that Mr. Harney's representative will go over in just a moment. And it also adds some additional stub streets to the north and to the west. There's a vacant, or excuse me, there's a large single-family residential parcel to the north that we want to make sure we have connectivity to in the future. And there's also a couple of larger undeveloped tracks to the west that we want to make sure that we have good connectivity to. One of the benefits of this development is all of the streets in this development are public streets. And so it gives a way around the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road, creating connectivity and multiple ways for vehicles to disperse, vehicles to move about. And so at the signalized intersection with the entrance to Kroger, there's, there will be a public street that will be constructed through the development and an intersecting public street that will go down to, go southbound towards Franklin Road. And so we're adding to the public street network via this development. The adjacent zoning and land uses directly to the north of the subject property and to the west of the subject property is in the unincorporated county, zoned residential, medium-density residential in the unincorporated county. To the southeast is zoned Commercial Highway. And to the east is zoned Commercial Highway. There is, there are several plans for commercial developments, one called Veterans Plaza and one for a liquor store to the north of Veterans Plaza. Of course, Kroger is located directly to the east across Veterans Parkway, and it is zoned Commercial Highway. And Caddy Corner at the southeast corner of Veterans and Franklin is also zoned Commercial Highway. That's the Kingdom Crest Commercial Development that is, that we're seeing buildings come up out of the ground as we speak for retail uses. The future land use map of the, the adopted future land use map of the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan recommends that the entire property be developed with the general commercial land use character. Now, the general commercial land use character is what we would see along our major arterials. And you can tell by the depth of the general commercial at this corner. You know, this plan was adopted in 2017. The commercial development has evolved, and we're not seeing nearly as many big box uses as we had in the past. And so what we have proposed with our update to the future land use map is to fine-tune that to keep the general commercial along the frontage of Veterans Parkway and for the rear of the property to be auto-urban residential. So kind of fine-tuning that as, because of the depth of that general commercial land use character that was shown on the adopted plan, we think is probably a little bit too ambitious for the market at the present time. Staff supports the zoning request for the subject property to be rezoned to Commercial Highway and PRD. The CH, which is a portion of this rezoning request, is consistent with both the adopted and the proposed land use map of Murfreesboro 2035 plan. While the PRD zoning is not consistent with the approved 2035 future land use map, it is consistent in some regards to the proposed update to the 2035 future land use map. It's not entirely consistent with the auto-urban residential land use designation, but it is somewhat consistent. The property is master-planned within the PRD program book, and the land use character, the AUR land use character, does allow for attached single-family residential. Although typically what we're proposing would be for it to be mixed with single-family detached. Also, another reason why we're supportive of this is the increase in the amenity package in the proposed PRD. The applicant and his representative are available to answer any questions. Mr. Brian Grover with SEC has a brief PowerPoint presentation on the proposed development that he would like to present to the planning commission, after which you'll need to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Chairman Jones, members of the PC, thank you for seeing us today. I am Brian Grover of SEC. I'm accompanied by Justin Harney and John Harney of Harney Homes. Today, we're requesting the amendment to the existing PRD of the Villas at Veterans and annexation of additional land into the said project, as well as additional commercial property along Veterans Boulevard, Veterans Parkway, sorry. The additional property is located in Russell County, is currently zoned medium-density residential. It's approximately 7.1 acres. The existing area to be amended would be PRD and Commercial Highway. Some of the existing conditions for the site, this is a view looking from Veteran Parkway into the site at the signal in front of Kroger, with Kroger behind you. This is a view into the site from Highway 96. And these are just some images of the existing community around it to the east. Currently, the plan is zoned PRD with approximately 49 dwelling units for a density of 6.89 units per acre. The, oh, sorry, utilities for the site are proposed to be underground. There's approximately 3.75 acres of open space and currently 1.79 acres of Commercial Highway along Veterans Parkway. The proposed plan, as Matthew stated, is incorporating additional land into this PRD for a total of 91 dwelling units, increasing the density per acre to 6.99. All utilities will remain underground. Open space has been increased by 4.25 acres. And the overall amenity package has been significantly overhauled to include opportunity to make the development more walkable. The townhomes themselves will continue to emulate the architecture from the previous PRD. There'll be no changes with that. The PRD still is going to continue to provide buffers along all sides. As Matthew stated, the public streets will remain as that public. And one of the better aspects of this PRD is that it will finally add that fourth leg onto the signal in front of Kroger. The townhomes will still continue to have the facades containing the brickstone and fiber cement board. There's been no changes to these. There's still going to be the same two-story homes, minimum 1350 square feet with the one-to-two-car garages. Here's a image of those. Just like before, the homes will have varying colors and materials between them to ensure that no two adjacent units are the same. When it comes to the amenities and some of the development features, we're still going to continue to have the entrance signage along the eastern entrance on the west side of the commercial properties to signify you're entering the residential aspect of this development, as well as entrance signage along 96. 96 will also incorporate the horse rail fencing that you commonly see along 96 to help emulate itself into the developments for that area. The pavilion and playground are still incorporated into this development. They have been located and moved to a centralized location to the north of the site. Some additions have been added amenity-wise, include a pickleball court, more opportunities for outdoor seating, concrete cornhole boards, as well as concrete ping pong tables to add additional features that are more of a permanent structure that we'll be able to be easily maintained and not walk away at night for the residents of this facility. The dog park is still included in the site. It is on the southwest area next to the pickleball court to move it away from the homes with some of that higher activity that it would be involved with. The access for the site is remaining the same along 96 and Veterans Parkway. The additional portions of this is that essentially there was just one stub to the west in the previous plan. This incorporates two stubs to the north and additional stub to the west, increasing the connectivity to the surrounding region by a significant amount. I stated before, the buffers for this site are going to remain the same. And the developer's been dedicated to that along the northwest and east side of the site. The commercial property that is going to be developed has been, we're looking to increase the size of that to accommodate a potential restaurant user for that site. That property alone will also be required upon development to install a Type C buffer along its west and northern boundaries as well. Anybody have any questions?
Questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Grover. We'll open the public hearing now and ask anybody that would like to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing that I don't think we have anyone left, we will close the public hearing. Ask for comments and questions from the planning commission.
There are no economic emotions. We approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And any other items of business tonight for we, if not, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.